Call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Please rise for the potential adjutants.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And we do need an approval of tonight's agenda. So moved.
Take it.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. When you post, hearing none, the motion carries. We'll now move into the budget work session. So we've received a whole bunch of documents.
Yep, I'm gonna let Jessica take the lead and walk you through some of these documents.
Okay.
Lisa, I think your enrollment worksheet was the first one that was included. But Lisa and I both have attached projected district enrollment. Mine has a five-year kind of outlook based on two and three-year averages.
Okay.
My document, once you get all the way to the bottom of it, it does forecast based on the salary-based apportionment and it takes into account our exceptional percentages that go into that salary-based apportionment. It gives us essentially at the bottom what we're looking at for support units. So, based on my projected enrollment for next year, I'm projecting that we'll have 214 support units, where this year we were protected at 222.5. So it's all the way down on row 118 where you can see.
What we don't have.
Oh, we don't have that.
Are you looking at?
Okay, so on the students tab, it's the page four.
Second one. Second one. There you go. The enrollment data was our second attachment.
Got it, sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, it's on page four. Page numbers, please.
I had a worksheet, I'm sorry.
The protected support units, you said 214, but this says 216?
So I have 214 as our estimated support units. Protected support units are always a little bit higher at 216. I had since then have done some additional math this morning. I'm comfortable at actually 213 and a half is where I think we're going to be for support units for next year.
Okay, and that's based on a decline in enrollment?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also where we're at this year based on average daily attendance. So if you remember, if you look at the supplemental handout that I have, I also printed some copies of that one. But from our February workshop, I had presented kind of where our midterm support units were last year when we had that protection discussion. And showed how we arrived at the 222.5 protected support units for this year. Our midterm support units for FY '24 without protection were 220.19. If you take out the protection on that, it actually would have put us around 210 this year. So 213 and a half, based on this is, I'm very comfortable with that number. Lisa, did you want to walk through your enrollment projections?
Mine's not so much a projection as just rolling over from this year to next year and rolling the kids who are here into the next grade. So you can see the class sizes.
So you think we'll be down about 100 students? I'm not sure whose is whose. I just.
Mine's the colorful one with the red-orange green.
Okay. So Jessica thinks we're gonna be down 100 students. Do you project the same?
She's looking at different, she's looking at different metrics than I am looking at, but what, what, if you look at, let me pull up my enrollment. You look up just our enrollment year over year.
Are you on the enrollment projection sheet or is, okay, so you're on that sheet, okay.
It's very small display though. So what I did was I took this year's spreadsheet and I just made a copy of it and rolled the numbers over. So one of the things that is happening is we're graduating larger groups of seniors and we're bringing in baby groups of kindergarteners. And that's been happening the last, that happened this year, happened the year prior. So, and we were at one point, we're at 4,700 and we are now down to, can't read that number, 4,497.
I think you're on a different sheet.
I'm on the one that.
Yeah, that's not on the enrollment projections, so.
Yeah, the first linked document. That's where, that's where I just pulled it up.
That's the board projection. Oh, I was on the one right below that.
Oh, that was Jessica's pretty colored one.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. So we are, you know, we're down 200 kids over the last two years, so I do think, based on the trends that we're seeing, I would rather Jessica be very conservative in her budgeting than to hope that we're gonna not go down by 100 and have not enough revenue coming in from the state to run what we need to run. So the nice thing about it is, is we can set our budget for the, based on the 213 and a half. And then if we end up with more, we just get the, we will get the additional revenue which will allow us to hire if we need to hire. At this point, I'm not, I don't know that we would need to do that, but I, yes, I do think that we are in a declining enrollment. I don't know that it's going to change until the housing market turns around.
And I would say that's the case for every school district locally. They're all experiencing the same decline.
Well, we're actually seeing it across the state.
Yep.
The head of finance for the State Department actually did a report about two months ago about the state's student enrollment. We're, we are down a lot and they're, they're, we have two things happening. One, we have a lot of options for parents in Idaho. They get to choose where their kids go. And then two, we, we just start, it's so expensive for young families to live here that they're not, they're coming and then they're not staying. They leave. Okay. So the decrease in, in, we base our budget on that 213.5 units. Initially, Jessica was saying that she thought that would be about a million dollars less in revenue next year than we got this year. She's worked on, done some additional work and I think we're, we're hoping that we're gonna be under that, but we're planning for the million.
There's some other things that factor into that. So although there potentially is an increase, if JPAK approves the education hearing tomorrow, there should be an increase to the base, which is what the salary-based apportionment, how we calculate that number, that gives us the amount that we'll get based on those support units. So we're hoping for that. But with this facilities bill that is also on the table right now, they're taking away some things with that bill. And one of the things that they're taking away is the lottery money that we receive. So that's $300,000. So that's factoring into my kind of a million dollar down from this year. There's the change in the average daily attendance that, that decrease in support units and then some of the other things that are kind of being shifted around. I'll have a better number once JPAK approves everything, have more concrete conversation around revenue. But I'm pretty comfortable with the million and the support unit calculation that I provided.
And are you doing that on the basis of a number that they've given you for the unit factor?
The unit, that's the same unit factor that's in Idaho code. So I basically took this year's salary-based apportionment spreadsheet. I used my enrollment projection, that number that I got from that. I plugged it into this year's salary-based apportionment spreadsheet, add an 8.5 to it because that's not in there this year. But it's in statute what the amounts will be for this year for all of those career ladder. And then calculated, basically took every single employee and basically moved them up a step hopefully. And that's where they'll land. I do need to go back in and factor in retirements and replacing those teachers at a lower step. So I basically redid the entire salary-based apportionment spreadsheet, factoring in a hopeful 1% increase that governors recommended 3, I did a 1% and use the 213.57 for our support units. And that's where I'm getting my comparison from this year to last year.
So you moved everybody up on the salaries?
On the, on the career ladder for the state. So not our salary schedule, but on the career ladder, which is what based, we have to place them on the state's career ladder based on their IC coding. And it tells us like, for example, if someone was a P5 this year and they qualified for APH, they moved to APH1. And then we get a set amount for people at that level. So it's a pretty in-depth spreadsheet. It's a fun one. But basically just kind of plugging in all of our existing numbers, knowing that I need to work with Brooke on retirements or people that are not coming back, so that we can true that up a little bit more and double checking. I, we had, for example, 68 instructional staff that are on APH4. I'm projecting that 68 of them are gonna be on APH5 next year, but there is a possibility that they may not move up. So then that would.
Probably one or two is on average.
Yeah, so then we would bump to, leave two down kind of thing.
Right.
So fairly confident with the spreadsheet. I mean, I'm utilizing exactly what the state gives us for this year to kind of make some comparisons for next year.
Okay.
I'm being very conservative, even in what I think it's gonna be.
Okay.
So on the, on the, my projection sheet, which is the first link on the agenda, I have gone through and just looked at when I rolled kids up at Spirit Lake. These numbers are so hard to see with this little thing. There were two schools. You can see the negative, the minus one on, down at the, the second half of that sheet where it says teacher slash grade average.
Okay.
So I cannot do this.
It's Spirit Lake and Ben Kiefer.
And Ben Kiefer. When you look at the class size numbers, we, if we didn't get any new kids and everybody came back, by, by reducing by one FTE in those two buildings, we still have really good class size numbers.
Really good meaning keeping them small or really good that?
Keeping them small. So like at Betty Kiefer, I still have 17 kindergarteners in a classroom, 17 first graders, 20 second graders in a classroom, 22 third graders. I think that's a 20.
Eight.
Eight. So that one's a little bit high. And then fifth grade is 23. But if we have to cut a million dollars from our budget, I have to find places where I can start to, to reduce. So I was looking at, how do you do that? I have two.
Only two teachers isn't good. Very far, but I know.
Right. I, I have asked the secondary principals to give me their master schedules for next year with their number of students in each section projected, so that I can sit down with them and start talking about whether or not we need to replace teachers or can we shift people around to cover the classes we need to cover. So.
The other thing that might play to our favor with this, when we met in February, I talked about the outcomes-based funding that the state was looking at, which would potentially bring in more money and kind of close the gap on special education funding. And that, it died unfortunately in the Senate. So that's not coming through, but they've come back to the table with another proposal which would potentially infuse some more money into our discretionary, which could help offset this as well. I don't want to count on it at this point, so I'm operating as if it's not going to happen. But essentially, since their initial request was dropped, they are trying to use funding that was committed to schools and FY '24 appropriation, but was not distributed because of the change from enrollment to ADA. And they're also moving some discontinued line items and additional dedicated funding into weighted per student funding to basically kind of help distribute that money that we was allocated to public education, but wasn't distributed because of the change in the funding form, not funding formula, but enrollment to ADA. So that could potentially make us hopefully net neutral, but there's no guarantees on that. Like I said, JPAK is meeting tomorrow to go through the education budget.
Are we looking at not having the alternative middle school? Because there's numbers on the bottom half.
No. Yeah, I didn't, I never, I, I didn't put it on there. So yes, we are still planning on it. I actually was there today and those kids are thriving and Paul Uzy is very excited because the eighth graders in that classroom will go into Mountain View ready to take algebra, which is not typical. At Mountain View, they particularly need a little bit of assistance before they can get there.
Okay.
But, and they were fourth, third, fourth and fifth grade when they came to her and she's got them caught up.
Okay.
So.
That's great. Yeah, that is.
And then the students absolutely love that thing.
Okay, good. Yeah, I was just, the numbers up here, we have one and I believe nine. So would it be?
Up here.
Well, I'm looking at on your spreadsheet. So up above the teacher's.
Oh yeah. So yeah, right now there are only, there are 10 kids in that classroom.
Okay. And so we would anticipate there being 10 next or?
Well, we're trying to build more in and the pathways to promotion that Shannon Ryder brought to the board will actually assist in that conversation when we sit down and put a plan together for parents.
Okay.
If kids aren't making it in the traditional middle school, it'll be a better avenue to get kids over there.
Okay.
So she has the 10.
And what is the funding on the alternative?
It's one to 12. One to 12?
I'm sorry?
What's the ratio for alternative? Is it?
12.
I think.
I think it's one to 12.
Okay, 12, yeah.
So we're right there. She's lost a couple of kids. I hope somebody finds them. There.
Okay.
Their families moved.
So the majority of the work you've done so far is projecting the, on the revenue side. As you're saying, that we might be short upwards to a million dollars. So that means somewhere, somewhere you're stacking that against expenditures. So how, how does that happen?
Well, that's, that's part of the conversation tonight is I've started by looking at where can we not fill classroom positions if that teacher's vacating. So reducing the staff size through attrition. That's, that's one part of it. And then we've talked about, I think it might actually, well, we've talked about, we looked at athletics. How can we cut a little bit there? We have looked at, well, it just, we're looking at everything. We haven't made any decisions at this point. We're really, until we know for sure what we, what we're gonna get. We don't want to get too aggressive, but we need to be ready to make some changes if we need to do that.
So the ultimate revenue number from the state for next year, how does that compare with this year's?
Again, that's kind of where I'm projecting that million dollar.
So are we gonna get less next year than we're getting this year?
A million dollars.
That's where.
That's where the million dollars is.
Yes. Between the change in support units and then again, like I said, if the facilities bill passes, we would lose the lottery revenue that we received. That goes away. We get facilities money in return. We lose, if that's where you said on what you can set up, where we lose the discretionary piece of that. So. And we would have to come together pretty quickly if that facility bill passes because we have to have a 10-year plan submitted to the state in order to receive those funds.
A 10-year, 10-year?
A 10-year facilities plan. The fund is for 10 years.
The, the bill is, is split into two pieces. So every district will get an allocation for maintenance of facilities, which they've never done before. So for Lakeland, right now it's projected to be 1.2 million per year. And then also in the bill, every district is getting an allotment that you, that you could like take some over the course of 10 years, but the total for us is about 18 million. So we can, we could take a little bit each year for, for our 10-year plan. Or we could use, we could.
We could take it all at once.
Take it all at once, or we could take bigger sums, but it, it all ties back to what is our plan. So we have to put that 10-year plan in place. We need to look at all of our buildings and talk about the HVAC at John Brown, the electrical system at John Brown, at Lakeland Middle School.
Well, luckily we have this great matrix that.
That Mike has put together.
Is a good start for that, so.
Yeah. But we'll have to prioritize which of those.
So we have 1.2 million dollars for maintenance? Replace what we're currently spending out in the general fund for maintenance?
Not necessarily. I think the bill's really geared toward going away from plant facility levies. I really truly feel that that's what they're hoping to replace. So I don't think it would.
No, but right now, I'm not sure what that maintenance category includes. I'm assuming maintenance, does it include custodial?
In the facilities bill? It's the main, no, it's actually the maintain, it's, it's capital project, it's facilities.
Similar to what you would use your plant facility levy for. It would have the same constraints that you would use it for salaries in French. It has to be a project that would last more than a year, the same requirements that you would have for a levy.
So have you looked at our current spending pattern in the general fund? Are there items there or expenditures there that will fall into that category?
Absolutely.
That could free up some space.
And how much money would that free up?
And next year would free up.
That's a rhetorical question.
Right. Next year it would free up some funds because like we do have the plant facility levy. So if we receive the 1.2 next year, then yes, it would definitely free up some funds and allow us to do more and move some out years after if we do not go back out for a plant facility levy, which with this.
I don't know how you do.
I don't know how we would get it approved based on them giving us facility funds every year. I, we would have to put some of that back into facilities and maintenance because it would save us next year, but we would have to plan for it the year after. So it's a stopgap measure.
So next year we'll have the plants, our last year plant facility dollars, plus we'll have the one, if the bill passes, 1.2 million. Which gives us some money to, to do what you're suggesting. But what she's saying is moving forward, it'll be the 1.2 million and we, we will probably have to use some of the plant facility dollars for the work that our.
That's the same work, same kind of expenditures, except you're drawing it from here rather than from here, right?
Yeah.
Year in, year out.
Yep. But it still doesn't replace the whole budget.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just looking for, you know, if, you know, if there's 300, 400,000 or 500,000 dollars that we're currently spending out of the general fund for what would be categorized as maintenance-type stuff, going forward, you would pay it out of that maintenance fund as opposed to out of the general fund.
Right.
And what you're saying is for the first year, free up those dollars to do something else with in a general fund?
To do something else with in the general fund, because we would have the plant facility levy plus that 1.2. So it'd actually give us the ability to do some more projects next year.
So the levy is internal, I think.
Do you want to go to the, all the way to the bottom and let's, before we get too deep into budget stuff, let's answer Ramona's questions from the last budget hearing that we, our workshop that we had.
So the last item that's included is that general fund review. I basically took our last five years that are fully completed, not including this year, and reviewed revenues versus expenses. And so the, looking at what you have. So that, that main page there is a summary of all the work that I did. It basically takes it by program like you see on our monthly financial report and tells you if it's a positive number, that's favorable. If it's a negative number, it's not favorable. So you can tell from FY '19 through FY '23, we typically, with the exception of '21, we've typically underestimated revenue by about a million dollars. There was a bubble in FY '22. We had some additional funding come in. The support units for that year were estimated at 214, but we actually got 241. So we received quite a bit more state revenue that year. And we also had some E-rate dollars come in, which is why there was a bump there. Last year, we were about 750 to the good on revenue.
So wait, I guess I'm not understanding what this, this is strictly variance of budget to actual?
So continuing down into the expenditures, we go by program. You can see we typically have a lot of leftover budget in our elementary program, not so much in our secondary and alternative. They're kind of awash when you net them against each other. So we could do a better job of making sure that our allocations are more clean there. Last year in particular, we were about a million dollars overspent on our special education. If you look at the preschool and the, the special education program, so we were over a million dollars there. Gifting and talented looks really wonky, but really what happened was the benefits were budgeted there, but the salary wasn't. So that one looks out of whack, but it's not.
Can I ask, you've got favorable and unfavorable, and unfavorable is bracketed. Does that mean that it was in the whole?
Yes.
Okay.
It was in the.
It was, oh, it was.
I need to step over to Ross. So favorable, unfavorable doesn't.
Spent more than what was allocated.
This ties directly to the audit. So I'm using the same language that you see in our annual fiscal audit. So if you're looking at the charts in there, it, it ties completely to that. So I wanted to use the same language to be consistent between the documents.
So you said the benefits were budgeted there, but the salaries weren't. But they were paid out.
Yes, they were paid out of the, they were paid out of the cracks that we just didn't put enough money there from a budget perspective.
Gotcha.
The other thing that was over last year was interscholaristic activity programs. So that is where our athletics and our extracurriculars are paid for. So any sports travel, any extracurricular travel, safety equipment, things like that, that's all there. So that was about $400,000 over last year. And then the other thing that I want to point out, last year we didn't have a plant facilities levy. If you're looking at building maintenance for non-student occupied, student occupied, custodial, those were over about $600,000 last year. And again, we didn't have a plant facility levy last year. So in total, if you net the little bit of excess revenue, well, little bit, I think 750,000 is not little bit, but the excess revenue versus the overage in the expenses, it comes to 1.5 million dollars. Our transfer out of the general fund was a little bit higher than we anticipated, than was budgeted, bringing that net change in fund balance to 1.8 million dollars. You add into the fact that we also had less fund balance come in during that year, and that's where you get. And that's where you get the two point three, um, that we were off coming into this year. So it just kinda compounded going forward. We overestimated fund balance coming into FY twenty-three. We overestimated fund balance coming into FY twenty-four, but that was because we had some pretty significant overspends in athletics. Uh, special education and our facilities budgets.
And what was the, um, that cost of overspending, I mean, what did, where did it come from? Is it salaries, benefits, no, I mean, is it, what made up the overage? Is it, is it from salaries, benefits? What outside services?
So for special education, a lot of it is the contracted services that we're having to participate in because we can't get people. Our contracted SLPs, contracted school psychs, we are spending a lot.
Uh, specific to FY twenty-three for that nine, the nine hundred thousand, that was salaries and benefits. Um, for that specific program line item, um, we had budgeted two, two million dollars for salaries. And we spent two point eight million dollars on salaries, um, same with benefits, we budgeted one point one and we spent one point three. So that was, that was part of it. Um, when you're looking at interscholastic activities, again, it was salaries and benefits. But you also, your purchase services, um, and supplies and equipment were also right there in it. So it's a, it's a fifty-fifty split between salaries and benefits and then our purchase services, which are.
Is that the charter buses?
Charter buses.
We had the huge increase in costs this one street.
So, um, that was with those, um, and then when you get down to, uh, building maintenance, it's the purchase services, uh, supplies and maintenance. We went a little bit over in some salaries in the student occupied building maintenance, but again, it's all mainly in purchase services and supplies and materials. For facilities is where we were over.
And a lot of that was like plowing and stuff where we don't really have a.
So, um.
How much is out of here?
It's ridiculous. Last year was a lot.
It's a chunk. Yep, it's a chunk. Um, I think we're pretty close to budget, if not over budget for this year. So this just shows that we did have overspending last year. And in addition to the planned transfer out for the board approved projects, we had overspending. And we had overspending in the categories where we knew we had overspending, so special education kind of unfunded mandate. Athletics went over and then again, because we didn't have a plant facilities levy last year, we had some overspending in our maintenance budgets. Because even though we don't have a plant facility levy, doesn't mean we don't do maintenance, cause we still have to do maintenance, so. But that, that proves out the number of why the fund balance was less this year than anticipated when the budget was presented last year. Or prepared.
What? What do we have in place to like? Stop and say, we are over budget here.
Um, me, I, I've actually, um, Lisa's here, you know, a lot.
I just asked her, do we have money for this? Nope.
Um, so there's a lot of conversations and I'm monitoring, um, I even looking at some of our things in buildings before we're approving any POs right now. I, if they're over budget in the system, I'm looking to make sure that they have wiggle room in other categories, so they're not over budget overall. So really, I'm scrutinizing everything that's coming in, trying to make sure. Um, I'm actually planning to typically, the district has done the payroll accrual for the district in June, that's typical. Um, I'm planning to do it in April, that's in line with some of the other districts, so that we have a really good, as we come into budget. Looking at where we are for fund balance, cause it'll allow me to accrue July and August payroll for our certified staff back to this current fiscal year. So that we have a better look at what our fund balance is gonna be, cause we know what those expenses are accrued to be. Um, so that's my plan is to have a really good, clean look at where we're, we're looking at for our fund balance for next year. So we don't have this problem hopefully going forward. Um, there's some other things that we can talk about, um, with this. For example, the activity buses, those still have not been received. We do not have a timeline for when they will be received.
Well, those are supposed to come out of Esser funds anyway.
There is no Esser funds.
I know, I'm just saying, they were supposed to.
So right now, right now, there's enough wiggle room in the board approved projects budget to take it out of there. However, if we don't take it out of there, we take it out of fund balance, or we wiggle around with implant facility levies for the current year and pay it out of there. Or we don't do it at all. We still can cancel the contract at this point. And that's two hundred and ten thousand dollars that we're looking at.
It was how much?
Two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
If they were supposed to come out of Esser funds and we had the Esser funds to pay them, where did those Esser funds go if they were not set to the side to pay for those?
They were spent on curriculum. We were under deadlines, but the state took it, the Esser funds spent, so they were spent.
Okay.
Yeah, the part of Jessica's struggle is, um. That former CFO here, um, she didn't know what the board had authorized and what he should have had set aside. Until we would be talking about something and I would, and she'd say, how are we paying for that? Well, this is what we were supposed to do, and then she'd look and he didn't, there was no money budgeted for several things, so.
Well, this, these numbers paint night and day picture of what we were presented with.
Absolutely.
Night and day.
Yeah, it's an actual, something to look at.
And it does answer my question. We've always overspent in special ed.
Yep.
Ah, okay, and then we can't hire special ed, so yeah, now we have to hire outside services. But that's why I was so confused, because we were always told that we didn't. We didn't overspend in anything, you know, the district financials were, you know, roses and puppy dogs.
We went from what was her, whatever her number was that she always had to talk about in, in the red when she came on.
Oh, the ten.
Negative twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-six.
Whatever, yeah, yeah. The year before, it was a hundred and forty-four thousand, so, you know, let's not give credit for that person, but whatever.
So this information is in the audit every year. Um, I actually pulled, uh, all of this directly from our audit to provide this chart for you. It's not presented in this manner, um, but it is on our audit, so I, I don't have a problem presenting this to you every year if you would like.
But this is what we were asking for and we weren't getting like a clear picture of what, oh, absolutely.
And I, I was going to put this year in there, but it's not an accurate reflection of what's going on, cause not all the expenses are done. So I just didn't want to, to put some information out there that maybe wouldn't, that's still fluctuation. We still have several months left of this year.
And this is perfect, I think, to even go on the website. This is, you know, the, I mean, nobody can argue that. Like she said, it's been in every year's audit, the problem is, is that, you know, like you say, you have to dig through every single page or whatever.
And know what you're trying to look for.
Right, right, and, and put it all together, but this is.
Well, and they wanted to put it in the same format that you see our monthly financials, um, so that it was comparable.
Right.
So I'd be happy to.
Great job.
I am curious.
Once again.
Do these people pay you enough?
Um, I didn't, sorry.
Uh, because we didn't, we didn't have a plant.
That should not be property tax money, that's property tax money.
Plant, plant facility is property tax revenue.
It's not in this revenue though, this is only general fund.
Oh, general fund.
So this is only general fund.
She's asking a really good question, do we know why our property tax but, revenue went down from?
One forty to sixty-eight?
It's not, it's just the overage in, in it, right? This is the compared to the budget.
So we, we budgeted essentially to have more money come in than it did. Um, I will tell you the penalty and interest, Cootney County made the decision to keep penalty and interest. They're not passing it on, so that thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah, but that's a legal debate right now, so.
Yep, definitely it is, so that thirty-seven thousand, I can tell you exactly what that's from. Um, the TORT levy again, um, we just over budgeted there for revenue.
She's looking at the, the first line, the property tax revenue, which is our, should be our nine point five two million dollar supplemental levy. It's just interesting that there's such a, a variance in.
And it really, that, that depends on when people pay. So if you have someone that's delinquent and they haven't paid, we will sometimes get more revenue in a fiscal year. Because somebody sold their house and they paid their seven years of back taxes. So sometimes we do get more in property taxes, just because there's so much outstanding from prior years.
Okay.
Um, so it's not that we're levying more, we, we get what we levy. We don't get any more than we levy, but it's just, it's just when people are paying.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Is there anything else you would like to see with this or?
So what is all contained in the elementary program?
All of our elementary schools, um.
But I know, but I mean, what is that? Is it electricity? Is it salaries? Is it maintenance? Well, maintenance would be in maintenance, but what is that?
So that is salaries and benefits, um, it is purchase services for the schools. They, they have the majority of that is salaries and benefits. Um, so of their, their budget, their total budget for FY twenty-three was nine point three million for the elementary program. Of that nine point three million, nine point one was salaries and benefits. So it's your building level budgets for supplies and a small amount for purchase services. Um, so it's, it's not, it's literally the cost of teaching, um, not including principals.
Does not include, that's a best of.
Yeah, so.
Custodial's all down in the custodial line item.
Well, the reason I ask is because we're always looking for money to pay teachers, but we've consistently, I mean, in one year, we were nearly a million dollars. Projected, uh, or got a million dollars more than we thought. We've consistently had more, spent less than we thought we were gonna spend, I guess, or had more, however you wanna look at it.
For the elementary program, but we're consistently over budget for the secondary.
So it washes our elementary, secondary and alternative. If you net those together, um, they kinda wash. We also can use some of that salary salvage, as you would call it, to offset any other salary in the general fund. So if custodial salaries are overspent, we know that we have salary salvage in elementary program that helps offset that. That's why it all kinda.
Well, my.
And then Brandon just left it where it was and just let it wash, and it was all in his head and he wouldn't put it on paper for us.
But it's not even a wash, because. Every year, when you see that you're gaining more, your budget is off, you should compensate and these numbers should be reduced. So that, I mean, that's the whole point of doing a budget.
So that, that, this is a great exercise to help prepare next year's budget, is to really look at where we need to make sure that we have things dialed in. Um, it is difficult to dial some in, some of these line items in, sometimes you don't know you're over your. We know that we's overspending in special education, but if I have a whole bunch of money in there and then we don't spend it, then I'm probably shortchanging something else. So it is, it is kind of a, I wouldn't say guessing game, but you, you finesse it and.
You could take the averages.
We're gonna have whaches and unders every year.
I mean, if you could average it, you could do something other than this, because this really looks like we're just.
Yep, and that's the plan.
Spending and doing whatever and just, oh, write it down.
Really, really, yeah. So the plan is.
Well, that's what I feel like, that's what I feel like in the interscholastic activity program. We just kept spending and spending and spending. That's not somewhere that we have to keep spending and spending.
Right.
Unfortunately, you know, and that, it's a knife in my heart to even say it, um, because those.
Right, and that's currently.
Extracurriculars are.
That's currently what we're using our supplemental levy for, so that kinda nicely ties us into one of our next questions is supplemental levy. Um, we, we have it for next fiscal year, but really with the, also with the facilities, um, bill that's being proposed. We're potentially losing the August election date as well, which leaves us two election dates instead of the four that we had. So looking at this, I, I would definitely recommend that we move forward with pursuing a supplemental levy. And we're gonna have to start talking about that, when do we run it, how much are we running it for, and what's the board's appetite for that? We don't have as much time as we used to.
The, the other piece that's still in play for our patrons, um. Was the, the bill that passed last year, which was the, uh, one point five million dollar property tax relief that Lakeland patrons have.
Yes. Property tax. So the property tax relief, once our plant facility, right now, it goes towards bonds. Um, so we have one more bond payment once that's paid off. Um, so if you look at your property tax bill and you're Lakeland patron or within our parameters. Um, you'll notice that that bond, you shouldn't have had anything levied for that. It would show as a zero on your property tax statement, because we received money to basically offset that. Um, it then goes to the supplemental levy. So once our plant facility levy falls off, that property tax relief that's coming from the state will then go against the supplemental levy. Um, so even though we're asking for eight point.
Nine point five.
Nine point five, that will bring it down to essentially, I can math in my head, eight. I do math all day, but not in my head anymore, um, so it brings it down to eight. We still have to ask for the nine point five. We can't ask for eight, because then it would bring it down to six, six point five. And we don't, we don't want that. We still need to ask for the full amount, but we would still have the benefit of that property tax relief, um, in there. And then if we ever got to the point that we didn't have a supplemental levy, if we don't have a plant facility levy, we can make that money for future projects. But I don't anticipate that's happening anytime soon.
So that is funded for this coming year?
Yep.
At the same level what we received this year, which was about like another.
It was, uh, about one point five, cause we were able to completely wipe out the bond levy. Um, and then we were able to reduce some of the supplemental levy this year. So next year again, it'll go against the bond, um, and then it'll reduce supplemental, and then the year after, it'll just go directly against the supplemental.
When does our, our bond is this, pays off this year?
We have one more payment, yeah, one more payment.
It doesn't go against plant facilities?
Uh, i- if we had plant facility.
I actually believe that.
Yes, it would go against there.
It doesn't have to work, Ron's plant facility, then supplemental.
Yes, but I'm skipping past thinking that we probably won't, with us, if the facility bill passes, I don't anticipate we'll be able to pass a plant facility levy on top of that.
But it's in place for one more year.
It's in place for one more year, yes, so it would go against bond, plant facility. And then if there's anything else left, it would go against supplemental. I'm just knowing.
It would be a hard sell to go to the community and say, they're giving us one point two million dollars every year to take care of.
Can you match that?
We still want you to put one point one million out there. That's gonna be a hard place to be.
Yeah.
And that is the intent, if you read the documentation, the intent of that legislation is to help the tax base, um, by not having to have that. Doesn't mean it's not going to happen, it's not going to be asked for. And if we really truly feel strongly enough for it, that we could ask for it if there's specific projects. I just, I don't know if we would be able to pass it, if it's worth putting the effort into it.
Right, and the other piece of that is that one point two is specifically for maintenance of facilities. But then there is that other eighteen point two or whatever the total amount is that Lakeland will have access to, that we can use for the big projects. So we don't have to, we, we really can use the one point two for maintenance, because we can do all the big stuff with the eighteen million.
And that's the same one point two million that we were talking about a lot ago.
Where is our plant facilities levy sitting right now?
Um, so if you open the, I, I have another attachment in there, sorry, I'm not looking at the board book one, I had all my spreadsheets open, so I apologize.
That's okay.
Um, but if you look at the estimated plant facility levy budget discussion item, um, basically what I did is I took. Um, similar to what you guys see in our monthly, uh, follow-up, I took that same plant facility tracking. Um, I updated it for what we're doing, so, um, we had initially met last July, kinda sent out a game plan for our plant facility levy. Originally, we had budgeted seventy thousand for the fences, we're not using that full seventy thousand, so I dropped it down to what we're actually using. We went over a miniscule amount on the, uh, carpet of eight now for Spirit Lake. Um, we still have some money sitting there for building budgets, uh, furniture and other things within buildings that, uh, Mike and I are gonna be sitting down. And trying to move stuff out of the current maintenance budget into this to kinda offset some of the overage that he has already there this year. Things that can be moved to the plant facility, so we'll use up the building budgets and we'll use up the emergency repairs fund. Um, moving stuff out of the general fund this year that can be moved into plant facility with those dollar amounts. We also have the district office security upgrades. I don't believe that's going to happen this year, just based on, um. Paul's timeline with installing the cameras, but we, I'd like to leave it in there for next year, cause we know it needs to be done. So with all that said, the original projects budget dropped down to two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And then we just approved at the last board meeting, the gym floor, the painting and the bleachers at Lakeland Middle School at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That brings the unappropriated plant facility levy funds for this year to six hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. I threw in some proposed projects, um, just based on some of the conversations at the board meeting, um, cement was there, building maintenance is there. I threw in some proposed projects, just based on some of the conversations at the board meeting, cement was there, building maintenance is there, bringing us down to a hundred and ninety-one thousand. I, I don't know if we could get a full three hundred and fifty thousand dollars done of cement work this summer at this point, but we could definitely get on schedules to get it done. So I'd still like to, I know that's kind of been an ask, is that cement work that we get it done, so we start choking away at that. And then knowing that we're right around the corner, as much as I don't like to believe we are to FY twenty-five, we are coming up on it pretty quickly, I threw some things on there. So John Brown siding and windows, we wanted to do that last year. I will bring an agenda item to the board in April to ask for permission to go out to bid for a construction manager for that project, so we can get that on the docket for next year. Since they are going to be at John Brown, the district office does need windows and siding. It makes logical sense because they're right next door to each other that we bid them together, in my mind, if the board feels that that's an appropriate use of the funds. I'd like to keep some money in there for building budgets and emergency repairs, and then again, have some money in there for cement projects. So that's just kind of a proposal.
Why, why do we not have Ethel and Spirit Lake Elementary on here?
Because they're part of the board-approved projects, which is non-plant facility levy. That's the money that was moved out.
Okay.
The two point eight.
The two point eight. So they're, they're not part of the spreadsheet, because it's a different pot of funds and a different fund. So.
So these are things that were approved?
So the, the top two portions, so the original projects and additional approved projects, those are all things that we're moving forward with currently.
That we have given the thumbs up for.
The John Brown did get thumbs up for this year, it just didn't happen, so I moved it to next year.
The thumbs up for the John Brown siding. We did not give the thumbs up. It was, it was a conversation, it was a conversation.
So I moved that down to next year, knowing that that's the next logical building, and because the district office is right here and it also needs windows and siding, I included them.
Right, but we have not approved to go for that. These ones up here that you have it mixed with were approved.
Yeah, so you'll see.
They're not mixed up though. She's, she's got it in a preliminary.
I have it, I have proposed, so preliminary. I don't, I, I, yeah, the only thing that is approved is the stuff at the top of the spreadsheet. The rest of it is a preliminary proposed, if this is the direction we would like to move forward with.
Can I add to your preliminary proposed for the district office? Will you please put lights on either side of this building? It drives me nuts.
Yeah, that's the twenty thousand dollar side of the security of the, of the district office.
If they will adjust these sprinklers so they'll quit spraying the side of the building, that'll help too, because that drives me nuts too.
Yeah. And then again.
Building is not gonna grow if we water it as much as we would like it to.
And this brings us back to.
Really, if that works, we need to install sprinklers everywhere.
And this brings us back to the conversation again, even on the activity buses. Right now, it's coming out of fund balance. We could take it out of the plant facility levy. I don't have it in here. We can cancel the order. We have some options there. Mike also brought to me today and asked for a hundred thousand dollars. So there was some stuff on the Lakeland Middle School project where they realized, now that it's been in place, that it needed some additional fascia flashing, flashing. Because we're starting to have some bubbling on the fascia, some paint issues. Emmerich is gonna take care of that on Lakeland Middle School. But knowing that we need to fix that design flaw for Ethel and Spirit, Spirit Lake. So that's gonna be about a hundred thousand dollar change order. We have some money left over from Lakeland Middle School and then we have an unappropriated balance in the board-approved projects to kinda help with that. But do we wanna take that out of plant facility dollars to do that? Do we want to take the buses out of, the activity buses out of here? There's, there's some definite, we need to make some decisions on where we're gonna pull these things from. We have the money to do it, it's just where we're gonna pull it from, because we need to do it right. Otherwise, we'll have issues with those buildings as well.
Well, if you're gonna have overrun on those large projects, that shouldn't come out of that two point eight.
I would agree, but, and so that, to me then, if we pull that overrun out of there, because those budgets are very tight as it is, the buses, the activity buses cannot come out of there. Because as it stands right now, there's about seventy-five thousand of unappropriated funds with the salvage, the fifteen thousand that was left on Lakeland Middle School and then the sixty-seven. There's, there's not a lot of money there that was not designated to something. If we take the two hundred and ten thousand out for those activity buses, you have some wiggle room. You have more wiggle room. So then definitely, we could charge that hundred thousand dollars there. Where do we take the activity buses out of?
So let, let, let me make sure I'm clear, because right now, the, the activity buses were planned to come out of that two point eight?
I had put them there because I wasn't sure where the funding was coming from. And now I understand that it's Esser, and we don't have Esser funds left. So then it comes out of fund balance, or it comes out of the plant facility funds, or we cancel the order. And I know we can't take action tonight, but it's something I will be bringing to the board in April because we, we have to make a decision fairly quickly on what we're gonna do there. We, when we estimated to eat seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the, the fund balance this year, that was not included in that. So that would push us over.
You said you were gonna bring that to us at the board meeting. Oh.
Yes.
And in doing that, will you also bring with you, we might be able to look on that sheet you made us, the cost that we spent? You know, what, what is the cost to us without the buses versus if we spent? Because I think it was quite a bit, if I remember right, if, for not having the activity buses, or am I thinking the other buses? We ordered so many buses.
You're, you're correct with that, that the, the activity buses in theory would save us money. However, we've gotten some additional information from the state. We cannot put those into our bus fleet. They have to be completely separate. Our bus mechanics cannot work on them. Anything related to them has to be completely separate than transportation. We will not receive any reimbursement from the state for those buses.
Because they're not a full bus.
Because they're not, they're not, they're not.
Oh, well.
They're not yellow buses.
They're not yellow buses. So it's going to cost us money to run them.
Whereas more contracted services.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
And we were told they would be.
Yeah.
We were told that.
I, I'm not sure. I wasn't there for that conversation.
No, I know, I'm just, I, we were told, because that was one of the questions that we asked before we approved them. That was the more information we needed to make that decision. We refurbished them.
Because I think they're more than, you have to have a CDL for a special education bus. That's what we were trying to avoid was.
Those activity buses, you wouldn't have to have them, but we can't charge them to transportation at all, at all. And if our transportation people did work on them, we would have to do separate type sheets and it kinda, it creates more of a paperwork nightmare for us to get the reimbursement from the state than I feel it. It would be.
And I see.
Well, then it, it also just seems to me like it's an audit flag, because now they know you have stuff that you're not supposed to be touching, but you know, somebody might call and say, I saw them do it, even though they weren't.
No, and we would definitely do.
They checked the oil on it before they left on a trip and now.
There you go.
And we would definitely do our, our best efforts to make sure that it stayed clean, obviously. And the transportation director is the one that actually brought that to us and was like, uh, did you guys know this? So that's, that's all information. So I want, I just.
This is weird, because every school has them.
They do.
In the state of Idaho.
Right, they're just not part of the transportation fleet.
That's weird. So what about the trucks and stuff that are at the district? Those aren't buses?
They're not part of the transportation fleet.
They're not?
No. And we know that they do the work, but that, that labor and stuff is billed back to the maintenance department and not charged to transportation. We keep it very separate, so that we do not have issues with our transportation reimbursement.
So then there is the, the feasibility of being able to have the buses, the activity buses, separate from. Because we're already doing it with the maintenance vehicles.
What, we do take maintenance vehicles to a shop a lot, too.
Yeah, it's a mixture. We, we will wrench on them, depending on what's wrong with them, or we'll send them to a shop if it needs to be done professionally.
They don't all go through our in-house. We, we send them. We do have quite a few that go out for their work.
And that's mostly because we only have two mechanics for our fleet and transportation state level is actually saying we should, based on the number of buses, we should have three, but we don't have another bay for them to work in. So the two of them don't have a lot of extra time to deal with facilities.
Can you sort of guesstimate, if we were to do that with the buses, like, you know, or maybe we could ask another district or something, you know, what is their cost? Their maintenance cost, their?
I know, I'm a lean school district, so I'm not sure what it costs, but I don't have a problem reaching out and kinda getting some averages. I know we would, it's a give and take, because we would have our own transportation, we wouldn't necessarily have to rely, but then we would also, um, the coaches and stuff, are contracting that out. But you also have additional costs for the fuel and additional cost for paying for someone to drive it. That's all built into the cost of getting.
It's cheaper than taking a bus, though.
Sometimes, sometimes it's not. We've, we've actually priced it out every trip where we look at the charter and then we look at what it would cost for us to set our yellow bus. There has been a couple times where we took the charter because it was with the amount that we would have to pay in-house to cover meals and mileage and time and effort. It was the same cost.
And the fuel.
And the fuel. It was the same cost.
Speaking of buses, though, if we, did this happen, that when you were superintendent, was there buses stationed up at Ethel and Spirit Lake?
Overnight, yes.
We just had a conversation about that, that we could build a bus barn up north and add a bay, so that we would be able to accommodate.
And that's definitely.
If you think about it, you would get more drivers that don't wanna really drive in the Rathrum. They're just local drivers that go to Spirit Lake or Ethel.
Wear a tear on their buses too, because they're not traveling all the way up and back every day. So, I mean.
We could use some of that eighteen million dollars that they're gonna give to build a bay, or build a bus.
We just need to figure out where we'd put it, but absolutely.
Hook it right onto that building they're building up there at Timberlake, and then you could open it. You could, you could start a CTE class.
I'm sure they would jump on that. I know they would jump on that, so. But it's just, I guess I just wanna set the, the, the tone that I'm bringing some of these things to April, because we do have to make some decisions on these. So I just wanted you to have the information as we're looking at plant facility levy, as we're looking at our variances from last year. We're trying our best to make sure we're staying within budget and hopefully salvaging some of our budget this year, so we're not eating into fund balance.
So just looking at Jessica's that compare, that five-year comparison and really looking at where we overspent last year. I don't, I know in the, the ballot language for the supplemental levy, I think it said that we were gonna spend one point five million of the nine point five on athletics.
One point three.
One point three, okay. So we spent four hundred thousand more than that. We spent one point seven. So one of the things that we could talk about is what part of the athletics do we pair back to get back to the one point three where we're?
I think that's up to the people participating, you know? I mean, they're gonna, it's their money, right? They're gonna have to make a decision. Here's what the community was willing to give and here's what it cost the district, the, you know.
I apologize, Sabrina, the budget for athletics in FY twenty-three was one point one. So there's two hundred thousand there that was already taken with the supplemental levy. So I know we have paying increases and stuff, but it, it shouldn't be as over this year, because we did budget it more for it this year.
So you already, we already got rid of charters, right?
We take whichever is cheaper, whichever way is cheaper.
The most economical method.
Cost effective.
Yep.
And then per deo for, I don't think you should be paying coaches per deo, except for maybe state.
So this is a, we, this is a conversation Jessica and I can meet with the athletic directors, activities directors, and just talk about, we have to pair four to five hundred thousand dollars out of what we're spending right now. Help us brainstorm what that's gonna look like.
And we need to share too, like share buses, especially at Timberlake and stuff, you know. That's all the time. There's two buses going somewhere, every tournament, every tournament.
They actually do a pretty good job with sharing.
The only time we ever share is when we go to Raleigh.
We've shared with, well, Timberlake will ride with Cortlande.
I know, but I'm saying in our district, if we have two teams going to Kellogg, then take a school bus to Kellogg, one school bus, not two. You know, it just takes a little bit more planning. They have the same schedule as us.
We could talk to Jessica about that, because I don't, I don't know that the two ADs are talking to each other. They're just scheduling their stuff. But when it comes into Jessica and she sees Timberlake and Lakeland are going to Kellogg, then we could just ask her to reach out to the ADs.
From a sports standpoint, is the only time that happens is wrestling. Like, they'd never go to the same place at basketball. They'd never go for football. They'd never go to the same place.
They go for cheer, they go for. Volleyball, cheer, wrestling.
BPA, FFVA. But BPA, they share already. Leadership, they share already. So we're really talking about cheer, wrestling. What about volleyball? Do they go to the same?
I don't know that they're.
Unless it's a tournament.
Unless it might be a tournament, yeah. Yeah, the BPA, leadership, some of that stuff they already share, because we actually, they, we share with multiple schools.
Just make the parents transport.
Yeah.
I like that.
It just wouldn't be every sport. I mean, we're talking about a select few, but still, it's a, it, I mean.
It's an opportunity to assess.
And it's not just sports. We have extracurriculars and I wanna remind you that it's not just sports and it's, it's our other programs as well.
Activities.
Yes.
That's why we don't have athletic directors, we have activities directors. I guess that would be, the other thing is, I mean, how can, how can we say, well, this is where we need to cut when where is it spent, you know?
Right.
How much did we spend, you know? I think that's back to Ramona's point about having the, the, the activities directors really be a part of this conversation. And even if it's a, you know, it's the share, it's a hundred thousand here, it's a, eventually you get there, you know?
And how much of it is, again, salaries and benefits?
Yes, so, um, on the monthly, I'm just thinking through this as we're talking. What you don't see on the one that I prepared, I keep preparing these spreadsheets and I'm recognizing that they don't always come through because they need to be a PDF, so I apologize. I'll work on making sure that they're something. But one of the things I did, right now, I do a over under.
I'll, can I interrupt you just for a second? So you should be able to send an Excel spreadsheet and when it's attached, it converts to a PDF.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
But you don't have every tab, I guess, for this one.
Oh, gotcha, yes.
Yeah, so I had multiple tabs.
Okay.
In this, this workbook, there was the five-year analysis summary, but then there was a tab for each year where you could see the over under on every line.
It is a great spreadsheet.
Yeah, so you're missing those, those tabs.
Gotcha.
We can supply that as a live link.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
It's a great spreadsheet.
Yes, no, and so what I'm thinking to, what you, what, like I said, what you don't see on this PDF is that for every single line item, I provided the over under, and I'm thinking for the monthly fiscal report, instead of just doing it over under for the total, I'll start putting those over unders for every line item, so that you can kinda see where we're trending with each line item in those programs, to make it more clear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So did you get an answer on where to spend the money for the buses if we buy them?
No, but I have to, we can't take action tonight, so I.
I understand, but you need to know where to go with it.
She's, she's bringing all of that.
I am bringing it as you have option one, option two, option three, or option four is get rid of it completely. So I'll bring you options and you guys can pick which option you like the best.
I think actually option three, let's get rid of it.
But I will bring it so that we have basically those outlines.
If you had to cut eight hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund.
That sounds, I mean, we're so heavy in salaries.
Yeah, you gotta go with salaries and benefits. You can't generate that kind of savings without going to salaries and benefits. So, that being said, in order to generate eight hundred thousand dollars in savings, how many positions would have to be drawn out?
Yeah, the average, yeah, we just look at average. Salary plus what it costs for benefits, we use seventy-five thousand for the total amount, so then it would be approximately eleven.
Divide seventy-five into eight hundred thousand.
Add eleven.
You get about eleven positions.
So the.
Do you know, do you?
Wait, is that a sure?
Go ahead.
Do you know at this point in time, what pension looks like in terms of retirements?
Not good. Just probably have, at this point in time, we have about five certified, five classified, and then I have three certified who put in their resignations.
Because people love us now, so they're not like, nah.
Yes, and out of the five, we have to replace at least half of them, because they're special education, and so. Yeah, but the good news is. But, good news is, I mean.
So those are hard to fill, so they're gonna cost us even more.
Well, but we can also, they'll be, we can hire entry level salaries, so.
Salary salvage between, you have somebody who's retiring at a twenty-five level versus a one level, it, it helps.
Lisa, you, there was two schools that had the negative one.
Spirit Lake.
Do they each have? They have somebody we're leaving, so those are, those are gonna be gone based on attrition, okay.
I'm not, I, I, we haven't talked at all about a, a riff and I, when we're talking ten positions, I don't know that we need to go there. Um, especially because we do have some retirements and resignations that we can kinda work with. The other part of this puzzle is it doesn't all also have to be a classroom teacher, certified teacher, so. When you look at this sheet, um. The state funds us for eighty-three FTE for classified, we have three hundred and nine.
It's okay, Dave, could you get rid of me already?
No, what?
Well, I think, I think before we even go there, we don't even have enough information, I think what, we're back to the, the spreadsheet, I think that Brooke gave us. That shows us the people, who's where, you know, do we really need four administrators there? Because they make more than seventy-five, they're like one and a half or two times teacher, um, or the average. You know, I think we need a, a better overall, instead of just looking at the number and go, oh, just that or this or, cause I don't wanna. You know.
I did include, um, from the February workshop, I am, I had that chart for the general fund. Um, I did include that again in this handout, um, and I added the person count, again, remember it's duplicated. Because we, you guys asked for the number of people, so, um, when you're looking at the ape stipend now. You can see that there's a hundred and eighteen ape stipends.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that one's not under, that's not my. The last page of the supplemental handout.
Right, so I just wanna check my, my understanding of the law.
And it's, uh, page three, okay.
If you're going to cut positions, that's kind of a riff situation.
That's reduction in force.
And we can reduce in force if we meet the criteria for financial emergency. Um, which I suppose maybe a reduction of a million dollars in revenue might help us with, I don't, I'd have to go back and look at the criteria. Um.
We also have some category ones. But we don't, I mean, we wouldn't have to open those positions.
Yep.
And then we have a couple of category twos.
Yeah, I, 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 this is just me and the board will direct us, but I would rather, because we're not talking about a lot of positions. I would rather try to do everything through attrition to get to that eight hundred thousand than to go to a riff situation.
I, I, I would agree with that, if you can reach it.
Well, I think we need to do like yours and look at how we're staffed, you know, and go back, I mean. I know Bob said it, other people said it, you know, we're only getting so much from the state. And we have no revenue, right? It's not like we can generate money, right? We can't, we only have so much.
Can't do better marketing.
Right, yeah, exactly.
You have that sales here.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it is what it is, you know, it's not like we're. I mean, we've, I think, thought of everything we could think of, that's just where we're at.
I mean, maybe we do do some marketing and get more enrollment and. Get our units up for. Jessica, on your numbers, on the page, the back page of your supplemental deo. Your. Um, you've got certified PS salary.
That's public service. So those are a separate line item in the, um. When you do the allowance ratio as on state statute, you have administrative staff, instructional staff, people services staff and classified staff. So if you look back one page, you'll see the ratios there, so I pulled the people services out, so you could see them specifically. Cause it, it, it ties out directly to that calculation for our support units. I was wondering if we could get into saying that, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, okay, I see where it's at, all right, thank you.
Um, you have to, a reduction in force.
Uh, where are our counselors count, oh, there they are, I see.
So we FTE.
What did you say?
Oh, I found it, I didn't know where we had put the, uh, counselors, but I, I see it.
People services?
Yep.
We get funding for the SROs?
It's.
We get fifty-eight thousand dollars in safe and drug free schools.
Otherwise they're part of.
Well, it just says FTE four and four.
Right, so, um, I pulled those out at, at request because that's one of those things that we have in the levy. So I was trying to highlight things, they're part of our, um, classified staff, correct, Brooke?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Right, okay. But, we have more than four, cause we have SROs.
Right, we have four and then we have three, so.
Right, so that would be seven.
But, three of them are on contract. We only pay four, the other three are contracted employee, so we pay a contract for them, so you have Rathrum.
They're not our employees, so they're not FTEs. Okay.
They're contracted services.
It's a contracted service.
No, that I understand, I'm just, uh, okay.
They would not be included in the salaries and benefits.
So we have some classified staff who have resigned or are retiring. And we have certified staff who are resi- uh, resigning or retiring, and we have some category one. Certified staff by statute don't have a job at the end of the year, that's what category one means, so.
Category twos, temples that are not being invited.
Right, so we had to do that, so.
How many category one are we talking?
Sorry.
Right, wait, Jesus.
Hold on.
Just, are the SROs in the safety and security program, is that where their funding is? I mean, on the expenditures, is that where they're classed?
Um, they are, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, if you're looking at the program on the breakdown.
I'm looking at, yeah, what you gave us on the five-year.
Yep, yep, that's where they're at. Um, it, part of their, they are also in a grant, so not all of their expenses are in there, cause there's another fund for grants. Um, so it's split between two funding buckets.
Okay.
So I have eight category ones.
Eight?
I have three certified resignations and I have actually four, uh, retirements. For certified, and then. I have.
So you have fifteen to work with.
And then I have five for classified, but, I mean, out of those positions, I mean, we can work with them. But we are gonna have to replace, um, for sure, our sped teacher. Um. There's some other ones, I mean, that we are gonna have to replace, but we could probably replace them at a much lower salary. Um. And we have a couple of category twos, um. That are gonna be recommended for non-renewal. But.
Okay, so if you've got fifteen to work with, let's, let's say you gotta replace five of those, so now you're ten to work with. That's, that's what they want.
That is, so if we're within one, and then I'm sure that there's areas that we could look at potentially.
And we haven't done anything with classified, so, so you've got some potential there. You've got some potential in purchase services, you've got some potential in athletics, you know, it's, it's doable.
What about stipends? A lot of stipends going out.
A lot of the stipends that are going out, though, are stipends that are flow-through, they're not our dollars. You have the dual credit stipends, you have all the ape stipends, you have the master stipends, you have the BA plus twenty-four stipends, those are not our dollars, they just float through us. We have really cut back on the stipends that we give.
But yeah, there's always a place, but I, I really think we need to go first, look at the staffing and what we actually have and go back like, um.
Well, we have two secondary schools that are, that are overstaffed right now, that we're gonna have to take.
Both, both middle schools are over there.
And, and Timberlake High School is overstaffed. So, I, I have to sit down with the principals and go through their master schedule and look at where, make some changes. And through attrition, um, that's the tricky part for high school is. We, we have to offer a certain number of, um, credits for graduation and all of those endorsements are important, so.
And delegates, all of that.
So we do have to make sure that we have those pieces in place.
Yeah, how many, uh, students do we have at the high school, Lakeland High School?
Eight sixty-seven right now.
Eight sixty-seven, okay, and then what do we have?
Uh, like six thirty, I think, let me.
Okay.
I can tell you exactly.
And then Timberlake, we're just over four, isn't it?
Timberlake Middle or High?
Lakeland Middle is at six oh seven, Timberlake Middle is at three fifty-seven.
Okay.
And Timberlake High School's at five hundred, five oh two.
Yep, so, Timberlake. They're right on the cusp, needs one building admin. The, everyone over five hundred, it's one per five hundred students. Um, so right there, you just cut a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, as far as the counselor, social worker, psychologist, all of them are all lumped into two fifty per one. So we have, what, what did we say our number was for students in the district, five thousand or something?
No, we're at forty-five.
Okay, forty-five hundred, so whatever that is divided by two fifty, I don't know that it equals our eighteen in total that we have or seventeen. So that's what I'm saying, I think we need to go back and look at what we actually have. Look at what the rule and the law say compared to what the state pays us and do it that way. Instead of, number one, leaving the pressure in, off the bat. To the building admins because, I mean, yeah, they can make that decision, but I almost feel like that's sort of a hard spot to put them in. I would like to be able to bring something else, so they're not being, you know, forced to tell people they've worked with for however many years or whatever. It's just hard, it's awkward, I, I would rather try and alleviate some of the awkwardness. But, I agree, I think, and, and we've had this conversation before, that we really need to look at what we're paid. What does the letter of the law say, I get it, we like, I, I believe me, I've been thinking of this since last night. We love our small schools and all that, but I don't know that we can afford to do that anymore, we, the cost of everything is just. Pushed us beyond that, and the people don't wanna pay more levy, you know, so I mean, we, I don't know what else to do. Except to do, try and get closer to what the state's gonna pay and what we absolutely have to have without jeopardizing. You know, the quality of the education.
So I see, Brooke, so, correct me if I'm wrong, when we're talking about administrators. If we cut that position, we owe them a job, because anybody who was contracted with us prior to becoming an administrator. So we're not, I mean, we're reducing the cost of the administrator, but we're moving them into a teaching position then, so.
Okay.
You're, um, so there is statute, uh, statutory language about that, and that's only for people who were with us. Went from our classroom.
Right.
To our, um.
Right, well, I'm not saying necessarily get rid of the people, I mean, I've, corporate wise, I went through a lot of reorganizations. Believe me, I did fifteen, eighteen in a fifteen-month period. Um, and I'm not saying that they always have to go, but there is a way to do it, you know, and to offer them still a job. Um, I get that, but. I mean, we only get paid so much and we're only legally obligated to staff so much and we just don't have the money and. Um, you know, we're just gonna have to make the tough decisions, you know, that's all there is to it.
Well, that's, that's exactly right, it's tough decisions, there are other places you can look, you know, we have behavior specialists. We have, uh, these people who are, uh, working, uh, to get kids into college. Which is outside the normal counseling room.
There's a separate.
There are other programs out there.
Right.
That we've put in place, which are probably worthy, but at some point you have to ask.
Right.
If it necessary.
Right.
Well, the college career advisors, that's a separate line item and the money is specific to that program that comes to us. So, our, our salaries are within the amount of money that we get for that. Uh, but some of the other ones that you're talking about, um. Yeah, uh, it's just a really hard conversation, because when we're talking about our two behavior specialists. If, if you talk to teachers about what's the hardest part of our job, it's the behaviors.
Yeah.
So how do you, how do you, I mean, that's just like cutting them off at the knees and not giving them.
But that's also associated with administration, particularly the assistants, because they are the ones who most often deal with those kind of issues. It's harder.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to, I mean, I don't know any other way to do, and, and to be as objective as possible, right? To, I mean, start off there objectively, just looking at the numbers.
Right, so if you look at what we get paid for, I know you're looking statutory, um.
Well, both, yeah, I agree.
We're over by four administrative staff and, and thirty-four instructional staff, nine pupil staff. And two hundred and twenty-five classified staff.
For this current fiscal year.
For this current fiscal year, so.
All those classified staff that were over.
They're the, they're the nine hundred thousand dollars, part of the nine hundred thousand dollars in special education, we have so many one-on-ones. In this, in our district for.
But if that's an IEP, there's nothing we can do about that, yeah.
Unless we're talking about doing some sort of blended model where we're having an additional life skills, so now it's a one to three. I mean, we have to put a one-on-one because we're spread out, right, so, I mean, looking at other districts are saving money. By doing a more, um, restrictive environment with, it's, you know. There's one teacher and there's five pairs versus seven teachers spread out and, you know, twenty one-on-ones. And it's just re-looking at it, re-imagining it in a different way.
Well, I'd tell you the truth, I think there's a lot of students that would benefit with that environment.
I mean, I think at one point, I think at one point, and I could be wrong, but I think somebody asked Kelsey this question. Truly, life skills, true life skills, we have essentially one. And at some point there was discussion about could we have three? We have enough kids who meet that criteria, I haven't asked for that in a long time, so I don't know what that number is anymore, and that was, I think, last year at some point, but. You know, and that, so then you have our life skills, but then you have behavior, I mean, so, but when you are spread amongst eleven schools. Then it becomes a one-on-one situation where in some of those scenarios, it's a one-to-three situation, because it's a more contained environment. You can manage it, you know what I mean, you don't need the coverage, because you're not, you're more, you're more restrictive just by nature. So, you know, that's.
I, I, I have.
But where do you put that, I mean, to start that up?
Well, we're gonna use the same building that we piloted everything else in, we'll just print another banner. Right, we pilot, see how it goes and Kelsey has the background for that and I think she has the most knowledge for that. I am, I personally am not opposed to that, I don't know, you know, what that looks like or whatever, I really do believe that we have. Students in the district who would benefit from that, classrooms would benefit from that, teachers would, I mean. You know, and, and I think, you know, more recently, we've been privy to situations where had students had that environment. They might not have seen, you know, the escalations that we've seen or whatever. Um. And to me, that's just a even better offering to our, our community really, you know? Yeah, I mean, that's.
You just have to think through the logistics, so if you had a north and a south and what's transportation look like and what, you know what I mean, there's, there's other costs.
Well, we already do it with the, with the, um, with the preschool, I mean, they're, they're, they're their own district in itself, you know? I mean, so, we can do it, I mean, we have, that's like I said before, you know. Y'all are the professionals, that's what your education is, so you can figure it out, you know, I know. As we have the knowledge to, to do it and, um.
But, I mean, I mean, I think at one point, I don't think I'm exaggerating, Lisa, can we. I think at one point John Brown had sixteen, fifteen one-on-ones.
But, I mean, I mean, I think at one point, I don't think I'm exaggerating, Lisa, can we, I think at one point, John Brown had sixteen, fifteen one-on-ones, at least. And legitimately.
Yeah.
But they were in different grades, different rate, like you couldn't combine, but, I mean.
And I don't know that you'll get rid of all one-on-ones because I think there are some situations where, yeah, that would be dangerous, yeah.
Hundred percent.
For everybody, yeah, but I, I, I do think we could look at that and see what that looks like, you know?
I just think that's another option to look at, that minimizes.
Well, I think we're gonna have to be more, yeah.
Even if you, you know, were to cut that in half. That, I mean, that could be substantial.
Well, and the thing is too, looking at what Jessica prepared for us, you know, we, I was under the impression that it was last year, we just went overboard on everything and it was horrible, but no. It's been overboard for five years, there's only a couple of places where we haven't continually overspent, but it wasn't presented in the manner it is now where we can actually see it. Um, so it's not like we just woke up and had this problem, it's been ongoing issue and now we have to fix it.
But it will continue to increase in the spent, the contracted service, so if we get out of the box a little bit and figure out how we're supporting the staff with maybe having some more controlled support, you know, then we really might have situations where it's truly a resource room and not, you know, the end-all, be-all.
Be nice if we could incentivize teachers to, to maybe wanna get that certification, um, so to help us with that, I know, I know.
They're not gonna do that.
One of the other places we probably need to look is, um, the secondary level at their number of admin assistants. So, yeah, they need to build in there a lot of them.
Do we not utilize the students anymore for a lot of that stuff? I mean, I remember when I was in school, we had so many.
We, um, they do have offices, but there's, they, there's very little they can do anymore because the laws are so strict with regarding confidentiality. So they can't look at anything that has somebody's name on it, um, so they can answer the phones is pretty much what they do anymore. But, um. Yeah, just take cost of stuff together.
How about, uh, individual school clerical staff?
That's what I'm talking about.
That's what we're.
Uh, not at the elementary level, I would say, we're not.
Well, I don't know. I've been in a school or two where there's three or four people sitting around in the front office visiting. That's just an observation.
Elementary only have two. But if the nurse is there, that would be a third, I mean, you know?
No, there wasn't a nurse there.
So, my, so are teachers running each other?
We're specialists.
Cause we only have, we only have two at each elementary.
You can make those teachers, they don't know. Three days a week, teach seven, throw their classes. No?
I think we're gonna deal with that differently.
Dave will have that conversation.
I guess, back to kinda some of the things we're looking at, I appreciate the brainstorming, but, um, I think one of the things that I wanted to go back to is the supplemental levy discussion for the next round. Cause looking at where we're at, we definitely, we're going to need some form of supplemental levy going forward. So what is the board's appetite for running a supplemental levy?
Well, we've always ran it. I mean, we've only, we increased it, um, the year we increased it by half a million because we had, I forget who it was, out of Boise, looked at the growth in the area and based upon the growth, um, so that the existing property owners weren't footing the bill based upon the growth, it added a half a million dollars. I mean, I think that's fair, you know, looking at that again, what is the growth been, what is, you know, what is the growth?
Cost of.
Right.
Costs of thing, yeah.
Inflation's a thing.
Yeah, but it's inflation for everybody, so I don't think that's a viable argument to the community, I get that. But I think if it's based upon the growth, which has been inflated, um, I, I think that's a viable argument to the community. You know, I think they would be more receptive to that than, we, we don't have to tell them that inflation's out of control, you know?
Yeah, I, I have no appetite to increase the levy, you know, I'll just put that one on the table. I've, I've always been of a mind that somehow, some way, sometime, you need to get rid of that thing. And I know that's a practical impossibility at this stage, but I think it should still be a goal.
Oh, it's definitely a goal, I don't think it's never not been a goal, um.
Well, we can't increase it and then say, well, our goal is to get rid of it, you know, that is a, it's a puke in my mind.
But Ramona, I don't know how we can state that the growth is the support for the supplemental levy when we're looking at decreased numbers of students. I think that's a contradiction in and of itself, I do think we have to.
What do you mean, decrease in students?
Well, they're expecting at least a hundred students less next year, and then we're on a decline, but I would think that.
You missed that first part, I'm sorry, Ramona.
Yeah, you weren't here, sorry.
We've been on a decline, I've had that argument for five years.
But I think we're talking two different things, cause what Ramona's talking about is the market value went up.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's, that could still be the case because people are, we are definitely building homes, people are definitely moving in.
Right.
If they just started bringing kids, so it's too, in my mind, it's too.
The problem with that argument in the minds of the taxpayer is, if that's the case, why haven't my taxes gone down more?
They did go down this year.
They did.
They did.
Some did, some did not, I have a number of properties, so I can monitor that pretty closely. And some did and some didn't, uh, but the, the reduction came primarily from that extra money we got from the state.
Yes, the property tax relief.
Without that, they would not have gone there.
I would, I understand.
So next year, when we, when we do, when we do go out for levy, um, with the, if the facilities bill passes and the access to the one point two million dollars every year moving on for maintenance and the eighteen million dollars that we can use over the next ten years for major projects, um, I would not, I would be, I would not be comfortable trying to go to the community and ask them for an additional plant facility levy, so that comes off for them, um.
The bond?
We don't have a bond, we wouldn't have a bond without a bond.
One-way bond, um, which we will, that will get paid next year, so when, and next year's the last year of supplemental levy, so going into twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes.
No bond, no plant facility.
So, the one point.
And then if we do, if we did, if we did the nine point five two or even what Ramona's suggesting, and you have the one point five million dollars from the state to reduce the taxpayer burden, we're gonna reduce the taxpayer burden, I mean, because we're taking.
Even if we keep it flat.
Even if we keep the levy flat, we are reducing for.
But we would need to go out, we would have to have it on the ballot November or May.
Yeah, I would recommend November because, this coming year, I would recommend November, um, I know people get nervous about that, but I don't agree that simply because you're a Republican, you're an anti-school person, um, and I, all of our parents, or not all, the majority of our parents are going to be out voting during the general election. And it doesn't matter when we run the levy, the no votes pay attention and they show up. It, it's the yes votes that don't always show up, so I think for budgeting purposes, because the other thing, um, that I feel really strongly about, and this is just me, um, is if we don't pass the levy the next time, I, I just, I don't think we go back out to the voters and ask again, I think at some point, the vote is the vote and then.
Yeah.
And I'd rather do that in November and know for May when we're budgeting.
With plenty of time to.
We are gonna have to do a riff at that point in time, we are gonna have to, I mean, it will, that will be a big deal, but I'm just saying, it's very disingenuous when we ask people to vote and they give us a vote and then we run that again.
Run it again. Yep.
So, that's just my two cents.
Yeah, and my point about the, what we did last time to increase it, I'm not saying to increase it this time, that's not what my comment was. My comment was, if we were gonna do it, that was the only way I could feasibly say to the community, this is why. Which is what we did last time, you know, because they wanted then two point four million more, and the board said no.
So we are, so, um, do you feel like you have enough information right now that at the April board meeting, we could bring a request to the board to, to authorize the running of the supplemental levy for November at least, so we know we have to get going and start having conversations? We can wait until the beginning of June, once the budget is set, to look at what that dollar amount needs to be, but, um.
There's just paperwork that has to be filed so that we can even go down this road, so.
What was that?
That we, the paperwork to, we have to start getting paperwork, if we're going to go out for a supplemental, we have to.
In November.
Yeah, so the, so we're on a short timeline because that if we run it in November, by September, the board has to approve the resolution language has to be to the county, that's September. And then it takes us a couple of meetings to get where we need to be, so we don't have a lot of time, I guess, to dilly-dally if we're gonna run it in November, we're gonna have to make some decisions.
Well, brings the information, I mean, that's all I can.
I can, we will do that.
And we'll take this, whatever we have tonight and.
What's your, you have a.
Paint expression?
Yes.
I'm trying to work through the timeframe in relation to the work that we have to do now in preparation of next year's budget. And then deal with the levy in addition to that. I don't have a problem with going forward with the levy, it's the timing of when we make the, get a bit of publicity out of that, I guess.
Well, we're gonna run it in November, it's gonna have to be sooner rather than later. If we wait till May, I mean, basically, if we wait till May, we have to ask Jessica to write two budgets. One where we get them at money and one where we don't, and we have to determine how many staff members we're ripping. Because there's no other alternative at that point.
Yeah, I know, it would be more than staff, I mean, you'd have to get rid of a lot of.
There would be programs, I mean, athletics, um, I think we have the armed guards on there.
There'd be, there'd be programs, there would be all kinds of things that we would have to do.
The levy would be for twenty-five, twenty-six, right?
Yes, the two-year period, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
It has no impact on next year's budgeting.
Right, no, I'm talking about May of twenty-five, when Jessica's writing the budget, she would, if we didn't run the levy until May of twenty-five.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And I will also bring forward the, some of the plant facility things that we talked about, so we can get moving on some of those as well. Um, and then hopefully at that point, I, I would like to propose we have at least one more budget work session, um, once we finally have good numbers from the state to move forward with, and I can get a really good projection on where revenue is. Um, it's like, there's so many things that we're waiting on, we're waiting on that revenue, we're waiting on insurances. Um, we're looking at the, are we moving, are we doing anything with the salary schedule? So I'd like to have all that information for that next budget work session.
When, when you're expecting to have the state numbers?
They are, uh, J-FAC is meeting on education tomorrow, so I'm hoping that they move forward some legislation tomorrow, um.
But there's always a little bit of dribble time waiting for the state department and stuff out of it.
So, um, they have been very communicative about the new, so once the outcome-based funding kinda got tabled um, and wasn't gonna happen, they, they sent out, well, this is what we're hoping to do, and so now that's where this new iteration of weighted student funding is coming from, where they're trying to still get that, the money that's been basically put into education but hasn't been allocated because of the change in ADA, or enrollment to ADA. So they're still trying to get that out, they have new language that's going before House and Senate and hopefully passing to where we get a weighted student funding versus an outcomes-based funding. So it's based on ADA instead of outcomes, so they're still hoping to get us that additional money, um.
We do have.
Not as much as we are.
We do have the post-legislative roadshow coming up, and they are encouraging us to bring a board member with us. So I'm just trying to, it's on my calendar for some reason.
It's April.
A board member?
Yeah.
I see that.
Um, it is April fatig.
Oh, that's a great day.
Tax day.
Um, yeah, it's on, I, I mean, I signed this up, but I didn't go on the calendar, so. If you, and I think the reason they said one more member is, um, because seating is limited, so I'm trying to limit the number of.
Only one?
I mean, we could sneak you in if more than one wanted to come, we could just, we could sit at Saint, at Lake Bonner Reef's district table.
No, we're gonna be using there.
No. But, um. If you're interested.
It's an all-day event, correct?
Yeah, it's usually like nine to three. And it was a, it's been at NIC, but it's not in.
It's at the resort.
Yeah, they're doing it at the Cordillane Resort this year.
I think you're, possibly you already signed this up?
Yeah, I signed this up and then Brooke and Jessica, you should've got my email, so.
Yeah.
Um, I'm looking and I'm not seeing.
Yeah, they haven't even posted it to their website yet.
And nine, uh, and all meetings will start at nine or nine-thirty, lunch and refreshments will be served at most locations.
I assume not, I bet.
Yeah, so.
So, let me, I'll pull up the email.
Um, and there's fifty-four seats left in the Cordillane region. They didn't put the time in the original email, you have to click on the registration link to see it. Do you want me to, do you have the email, Lisa?
I'm looking.
I can forward it to, I have it up.
Oh, yeah, will you please?
Yeah, it's from Taylor Baggerly.
Oh, that's why, I'm looking for another sponsor, barring.
Yep, nope, it's, I'll forward it right now, so it'll be up your email.
Here it is. Confirmation, so yeah, you should have a confirmation.
I did, I have one.
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I forwarded it, um, here.
Yeah, right here, it just, this is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, I'm done.
It just doesn't tell us where or anything.
It's gonna be at the resort.
It's weird, I don't have time, mine's not showing, so you sent it to me, I'm gonna just re-sign this up, but. Uh, for those of you who haven't gone, it is, um, it is, uh, it's well put together and they go through every single new piece of legislation and the impact it will have on our district and, uh, they go over all the funding mechanisms, so we have a better understanding of how it's coming to us.
Yeah, I would like to attend that, I would need more information, I'd have to.
It's March or April fifteenth.
At the Cordillane Resort, um.
Rearrange my life here, so. Seems like we're on a daily basis.
We moved IBB to the second, but.
Correct, yes.
We don't start time like that.
Um, I think the parent advisory meeting's at nine thirty.
So we moved it to six.
Oh, you moved it to six for the IBB?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so what's the other one that?
We have a special board meeting on the night.
I was thinking the Tuesday was when we were getting back together, IBB, but, I don't know.
Yeah, Tuesday, two, the second, yep.
It's not, that's when you, you need it.
The second is Tuesday.
Yeah.
So, Ramona, did you say you wanted to go?
Yeah, I would like to go, um.
I will, do you want me to register you right now?
Yeah, that would be great, yep, and then, yeah, then it'll send me an email, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, and then I can, uh, that gives me enough time, I think, to be able to.
It won't, but it does send you an email that, uh, next to your Google Calendar, so you'll have to put it in your calendar. Normally it does, but this time it didn't, so.
No, I have to manually. Yeah, no, I have to manually do all my calendars. Well, not my work calendars or my personal, but any of the district ones, I have to, so I just don't like to, it's all.
Rebecca's.
Update.
Yes.
Is there, uh, Ramona asks if you have any food or dietary restrictions?
Do they have, well, the easy thing is, do they have a vegan checkmark?
There's, um, I, do you want me to just put vegan there?
Yeah.
It's just a.
That way I don't have to list everything. Although I can eat meat, but.
I, I always tell them vegan, but I eat meat.
Yeah.
Just, just do that.
It's the easy way to.
Is there anybody else who would like to go, and I'll just register you?
I'm doing it.
Well, you just have them one.
Well, we still have fifty-four seats open for region one, so.
Yeah, we can, we can put more than one.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna kick you out.
Right.
Yeah.
We can share a seat.
My reputation precedes me.
Share a chair.
Oh, it is.
Oh, is it, is that what they'll say? He's back again.
Yeah.
We're good, did we land on a date for that student here?
The ninth of April.
The ninth of April.
Ninth.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll have the I B B work session after that.
On that.
So, Jessica, do you have a, are you thinking middle to end of April for another board workshop, do we have enough information?
I would say for sure, um, after the board meeting, or even the roadshow, yeah, we can do one then.
After the roadshow. Yeah.
Actually, that would be good to say.
The roadshow, they'll give you your spreadsheet.
Yep, so that's on the fifteenth, um, so anytime after that.
I love April and May. Um, I don't know, we could do a.
Let's do the seventeenth.
Okay, so this is the one that didn't get, is it seventeenth?
Seventeenth?
Mm-hmm.
Um, at five thirty, or six.
Six o'clock.
Six to eight, six to seven, or, yeah.
All right, can I be added?
That happened.
Yeah.
Seventeenth. Ran out so much fun at that meeting.
I'll bring it up.
They're all fine, you just have a blast at all of them.
Seventeenth, seventeenth. All right. Yeah.
If you're slightly sadistic, I'm good.
You call me sadistic, it's a rough meeting.
Did I? I'm sorry.
At least she's saying it to her face.
In a good way, though, I mean, it's, you put yourself through some stuff.
All right, so is there any further discussions that we need to have at tonight's meeting?
Tonight? No.
Task dates bedtime.
I'm good.
Okay.
You guys always talk over me.
I've been yawning.
All right, and yawning, so, well, on that note, we will go ahead, oh, yeah, oh, we are starting, right?
Hey.
And we'll just, uh, end the workshop, it's seven fifty-four.